Welcome to the Hampden Town Council Meeting, September 21st, 2015. This time, would you please join me for the Pledge of Allegiance?
My pledge of allegiance is to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The next item up is the Consent Agenda. Does anybody have any questions on the Consent Agenda?
I'd move acceptance of the Consent Agenda.
Before we do, is the department reports separate from the Consent Agenda? I don't see them on there.
It's in the Consent Agenda. It's under 4B.
Okay, yeah, I just have a remark or question as such, so the public will know, if I may.
Yeah, go ahead.
About the skiing center. And as everyone knows, we had new LED lighting installed there. And there was a rebate from Maine Efficiency. The rebate was for $16,800. And Shelley's report says that, I'm just gonna read it, the department's cost of lights was $3,947, so basically $4,000 for the lights. "The LED upgrade has dramatically changed the quality of lighting in the gym space along with showed significant savings in the electric bill. After reviewing the electric billing and comparing them to billing from prior, the prior year, the savings in four months in comparison to one year ago is over $4,500. After just four months, the savings has more than paid for the upgrade." I just wanted to let the public know of that.
Thank you. Any other questions on the Consent Agenda? We have a motion approved, we have a second?
Second.
All in favor? The next item up is public comments. This time, it's a chance for anybody in the public that would like to speak on anything that is not on the agenda tonight. Now is your chance. Is there any public comments? Seeing none, we'll move on to the next item. Policy Agenda, we have no news presentations or awards, no public hearings. Nominations. Marsha Richardson, appointment to Laura Hoyt Pool, Board of Trustees, Services. Counselor McAvoy?
Thank you, Mayor Ryder. At the Services Committee on 9/14, the committee voted unanimously to recommend the appointment of Marsha Richardson to the pool board. I make a motion that the council appoint Marsha Richardson to the pool board.
Second.
Any discussion?
Just reiterate what we all said in committee, which was, we appreciate the public's interest, especially when you get skilled people willing to invest their time.
All in favor? All opposed? The next item up is the discussion for candidate forum and the newsletter profiles. The newsletter's gonna be coming out shortly. And we were gonna have a profile of each of the six candidates running for three at-large positions. Counselor McAvoy?
I object to the use of taxpayer facilities to promote incumbent candidates. It, in my opinion, it's improper and borderline, if not in fact, electioneering. And ironically, it likely would not be improper to promote non-incumbents, but I'm quite sure that wouldn't be acceptable to most people. Also, I think it's improper that during council meetings for counselors to iterate what they think their accomplishments were during the tenure. And I have no problem with a third party sponsoring a meet and greet or debate at a non-town-owned facility. And actually, I'd like to see some sort of a debate type of affair. A forum such as this would give incumbents a great opportunity to defend their record, and new candidates could rebut the assertions and offer their own ideas about what the counselor or counselors have or have not done, as well as offer their own. And if there's anyone out there, you know, who would like to put something together, I'd be more than willing to help facilitate that. And that's about all I've got to say about it. I've said the same thing for the last two or three years, and my position hasn't changed.
Counselor Marvel?
I agree with some of the substance Counselor McAvoy just offered. I don't see a conflict with the town investing in, basically, public education about an important process to its citizens. And as long as all candidates, incumbent or not, are treated equally in that process, I don't see, personally, I don't see a problem with that. I'd echo and support the idea of a third-party facilitation of some kind of forum, and I think that would be healthy for everybody in town. I'm not so sure the counselor should be directly involved in it, but I think the concept of that as a third-party-supported activity is a good one.
Thank you. Any other discussion? Counselor Shakespeare?
On most of those points, I couldn't, could not agree to disagree more, except for the third-party issue. Number one, I've been on the council six years, and it's not a matter of having the council forum and touting your accomplishments. What this is about is letting the public know who you are and what you're all about. That stands for the incumbents and the candidates. I believe it's an opportunity for the public to see, rather than just see campaign signs up on the side of the road or the newsletter coming out with your picture and what your ideas are, what your accomplishments have been in life, and who you are and who you are not. They'll give a point in fact is that if you watch the presidential candidates right now, which I've watched night after night with amazement at times, I could not make up my mind just by getting a flyer in the mail saying, oh, this individual believes in this and that individual believes in that. I wanna see them speak, I wanna see them act, I wanna see their reaction to questions. I wanna see who I'm going to vote for and what they're all about. And I think the same thing should be with the council, and that's the way it's been for the past. I do believe, however, though, that the questions that have been asked year after year, a little bit outdated. Some of them are okay, but most of them are outdated, and I believe they should be updated. I believe they should reflect exactly what this town council has done for the last two or three years, what we're involved with, recreation, the MRC, fiber right, everything and anything, what the candidates intend, if they have an agenda, per se, which everybody has some kind of agenda, good or bad. And I think the public needs to know, even the bus, how do we feel about the bus, why you may vote this way, why you may vote that way. And I think a third-party thing would be good. I do not agree with a debate. A debate, far as I'm concerned, is getting into a wrestling pit and seeing who's the strongest and who's this and who's that, who can down the other guy the most. That's not what this is all about. The public can see, the public can evaluate who you are and what you are. I think, as I have spoken to the town manager and the mayor and some others, I think this year we have to emphasize not to degrade another individual, not to pick on him and say, well, he did this and I don't agree with that. No, you're up here to say to the public what you're about, so they can evaluate, not pick on the other guy, candidate, or somebody who's been on the council for a couple of years. So that's, you know, that's how I feel about it.
Anybody else in discussion? Counselor McAvoy?
Well, Bill, I could almost disagree with almost everything you said, except for the last part of it, and the part about bringing up what counselors incumbents have or have not done over the last two or three years is exactly what I did last year. And so I find it kind of odd that you would disagree to that type of activity taking place at this forum. That's exactly why it should not be sponsored or supported in any way by the town. It just is not proper. So, but I agree that the public has every right to know what every person that's running, you know, what they stand for, you know, who they are, whatever. I just think it's terribly improper to spend town money to do that, especially for incumbent individuals. That's my opinion.
Counselor Marvel?
May I direct the question to the town manager?
Sure.
Angus, you attached some information that I'll confess I just glanced at this afternoon about legal women voters facilitating similar-type activities. Do you have any thoughts on where we should head with this?
Well, Angus Jennings, town manager, for the record. There's the immediate issue of what to do this fall, if anything, and part of the kind of orientation my initial month on the job is looking at what's been done in the past and wanting to make sure to maintain the same level of service, provide the same, provide what people expect from town government. So it's toward that end that Denise and I took the groundwork, but the, to make something happen this fall, if the council chooses. But the letters that have gone out in the past years all refer to the council or a committee of the council hosting the events. So we have not affirmatively said there will be a forum. We wanted to get, I wanted to get the direction from the council tonight. In terms of future, you know, and I should say for this fall, I don't, I don't see that it's in any way practical that there would be a third party that would emerge and be able to pull this together with the timeline. I would be happy to get to a point for, I know the next election isn't for two years out, but I think having a third party do it has some logistical advantages, and whether that's, you know, whatever entity would be interested in doing that, I think would be terrific. I, in my prior work in towns, it's not been something that I've, I'm familiar with the town government doing, if for no other reason than it's timed toward, you know, an extra set of work. But I definitely feel it's a great public service to the voters to have a forum, to see people in person. So to the extent there's a vacuum that needs to be filled this year, I'm very happy to run with that, and Denise is, you know, provides a lot of support on that as well. But, you know, I'll do what the council directs me to do, and that could be to take one action in the immediate term and something else for the future.
I should know this, but what's election day? What's the date?
November 3rd.
So we've basically got five weeks.
Counselor Shakespeare?
Counselor McAvoy keeps saying about, why should the taxpayers pay for this and spending money on this? Okay, what kind of money are we spending on a forum? What kind of money is it costing us to do that? I'd just like to know.
I think the out-of-pocket cost is quite minimal. It's more, you know, the staff time, which our time is at the pleasure of the council, so it's.
Staff time, you, if you're there, you get paid anyways.
Since we don't have a videographer, I guess that would fall on me.
Okay, and you get paid by the hour, okay? So you get paid extra to do that, and whoever we hire, if we have whoever to, to.
Moderator.
Moderator, right? That individual.
Yeah, I'm not sure what the past practice has been on paying the moderator. I don't have that information.
Right, so, you know, I just can't believe that we would not have a council forum because we're worried about that minimal amount of expense. Like I say, it's very important for the public to see the incumbents and the candidates, who they're gonna vote for, yea or nay. I just can't see where expense is even an issue here. I think the questions and whether or not you're gonna allow a debate and whether or not you're gonna allow somebody, like last year, there were candidates who started degrading other incumbents, and to me, that's childish. It's unnecessary, it's not professional. And if we're gonna have the council, in my opinion, the way it is, a professional council, I mean, we gotta do away with that stuff. We don't need that, what I call childishness. That's my opinion.
Counselor McAvoy?
Well, Bill, I don't recall mentioning expense at any time. It's not the expense, it's the use of public facilities. It's the forum that is presented through the use of a public facility. Whether you wanna call it expense or not, I mean, it's, you know, it's not the expense, it's the principle of the thing. And, you know, your characterization of me attacking somebody last year, I just had a different opinion of what they, what they said that they accomplished, you know, in the last year or so before that, that's all. Now, you're saying that I shouldn't be saying stuff like that, but, you know, and I'm saying they shouldn't be saying stuff like that. So, you know, that's just the way it is. And I'm saying that if you're gonna have some sort of a forum like this, then you better be prepared to have somebody, you know, call you on the carpet for what you say you did or didn't do over the last three years.
I, I'm 100% prepared, and I have no issue with that. If somebody could call me on the carpet.
Don't call me childish, or what I said childish.
Counselor Saroyes is speaking next. First of all, whether it's cost or using the facility, we're running for town council, we're using the council chambers and the audiovisual equipment to educate the public on who we are when we're running for the position, point blank. Unless you wanna organize and get WLbz in here to film us, have a forum offsite, and be able to pull that off in five weeks, good luck. The, I think at the end of the day, our job is to make sure that we ensure that we educate the public, the residents of Hampden, on who we are and what we can bring to the table, not sliding anyone in. And I will tell you, folks, I hear it almost every day, people do watch us. And the way some of us are coming across, our mannerisms, our disrespect of people, of people who work for the town, of each other, comes across loud and clear. And that, that approach may have gotten you into office, but it's not gonna keep you in office. So, again, I agree with what Bill's saying, the use of these chambers, we should use the chamber to educate the public on who we are and what we can bring to the table. And if we can do it in respectful manner, that's great. If we can't, then those people who can't do it or can't control themselves will be held accountable.
Counselor Royal, did you have something to say?
I think the public needs to be educated on both the people that are running that are new and the current sitting counselors. I don't see an issue of using the chambers or anything for a public forum. The only thing I would say that probably shouldn't happen was stating what you've accomplished and so forth from your council seat. You're not supposed to talk about that from your council seat. That's the only thing that I would say that I could agree with, that we weren't supposed to be doing. But as far as everything else, I agree with Bill and Greg and Counselor Marvel here. We've gotta have a forum for the public. You can't just shut it down and not have a forum. I think that's where we're going with that, right? We should do that.
Well, Counselor Marvel, do you have a comment?
I was just gonna try to move the discussion on a little bit. I think some of what each of us might like to do is tempered by time and the reality of the timeframe. So for this year, right now, unless a better offer steps forward, I think we should look at council chambers. I don't see it as a matter of the council controlling anybody or putting on the event, it's the council offering a forum and a means for education and a place for candidates to speak. I think a moderator would be very helpful, otherwise you've got town staff or a counselor trying to do that inappropriately. And I think the two sources validating or contesting a candidate's performance are the moderator during the night of and the voter on the day of the election. It's not a position of the town council vetting anybody or disagreeing with anybody, that's not our role. So I would, I would hope that tonight we can move along and get towards some resolution and some direction for the town manager and Denise to move, to act.
Counselor McAvoy?
Well, I suppose you could consider this a rhetorical question, unless somebody actually has an answer for it. I, I don't recall seeing any other elective body anywhere, whether it's state level, county level, anywhere, where the chamber or where the, you know, they are putting on their own forum for individuals that are gonna be elected to that body. I've just never seen it. The senate doesn't do it, the House of Representatives doesn't do it, the county commissioners don't do it. I've just never, ever seen it anywhere.
Counselor Marvel?
Just as one example, the city of Angkor uses the public library, and while we were sitting here, I was envisioning our library and trying to determine if it had any feasible characteristics for this, which I don't think it does. But I think small towns tend to use what they have available, and respectfully, I would say that, in my opinion, you're overstating the symbolism or function of this. I'm seeing it more as a central location with technological capacity to connect people who can't come here to it, not, not a council sort of controlling its own process and electing its own people. So I think we're just gonna see it differently.
Well, we are, and I just, if the, if the information that is put into the newsletter, for instance, is limited to maybe a picture, if you want to, if you're vain enough that you need to have your picture out there, that's fine, do that. Your name, your address, even your occupation, if you want. I see absolutely no advantage in putting in there that you've been on the town council for X number of years. I see absolutely no value to that, except to the individual. That puts every other name that is not on the council, is not an incumbent, at a disadvantage. And if you can't see that, then, you know, I just think it's, you know, it is just not the proper venue to do it.
I don't know how you call that a disadvantage, that might come back to hurt you if you say you were on the council, so. I guess my suggestion is, in the sake of time, that we continue with the way it's been in the past. We'll hold a public forum here, we have a moderator lined up to do that. It's up to the staff or the council if we have suggestions on what we think there should be for questions. We should submit that to the town manager or Denise to help in that, maybe. I think we need the newsletter sent out with the profile. We'll give the person 100 words. You tell us what you wanna tell us, what you think is important to the people. If, you know, if they wanna tell me that they were on the council, that's good, 'cause most people know who's on the council and what they have done. So it may help them and may not. But they have the opportunity to say whatever they want in that length of time. So that's my recommendation for the way we handle it this year.
If we need a motion, I move what the mayor just said.
Well, we need, any public comment first? Okay, go ahead, Counselor Marvel.
To get something done without tapping my recall ability, and I was gonna suggest that your statement take the form of a motion, which I'm supporting. Second.
Chair can make a motion.
I tried to, maybe we state that.
Yeah, go ahead.
I can, I can do what you want. Go ahead, we'll do it.
Counselor Royal?
I'm willing to do it. I'll go ahead and make a motion that we continue on, as we have, doing the public forum and doing the newsletter, as we have in the past. It's too close to the election to be changing things.
Can we, can I ask you to amend that motion to include perhaps counselors can submit suggested, suggestive questions to Denise or to the town manager? Maybe some questions to update, you know, to current events.
I don't know if we need that for an amendment, Bill. I think we can come in on our time and work with them in the office.
Okay, just that, there'll be no personal attacks. That's, you know, that's, okay.
Second.
Any further discussion?
There's two dates that have been floated with the candidates, and Tuesday, October 6th, is the date that works for all of the candidates.
Counselor McAvoy?
Is Counselor Shakespeare's comment about the no personal attacks, is that part of the motion? How do you do that?
No, that'll be up to the moderator to control the meeting.
Thank you.
So we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor? All those opposed? Okay. The next item is under unfinished business, town attorney recommendation, town manager.
I'm afraid I'm gonna recommend that we table it once more.
Okay. Any questions or discussions about that, or are we all? Okay. Under new business, request access Paper Mill Park, Services Committee recommendation, Counselor McAvoy?
Thank you, Mayor Ryder. During the 9/14 Services Committee meeting, we discussed a request from Joseph Zadluski, hope I pronounced that close, from the U.S. Geological Maine Cooperative Fish and Wildlife Research Unit for access to Paper Mill Park for installation of a weir for eel research. Although we had limited information in time, it was of the essence, the consensus was that since it appeared to be state-sanctioned, it seemed reasonable to recommend approval to the council. I make a motion that the council approve the aforementioned proposal.
Okay, we'll have a public comment. Would you like to speak?
Joseph Zadluski, I could.
Just, if you come up here to the mic, I'm just gonna give you an opportunity to explain it if you would like.
Make sure the light's on. Sure, well, thanks for the opportunity. Long and short is that I'm at the University of Maine, I have an unusual position where I'm actually with USGS, as was stated, and working with a graduate student, Emily Thornton. And part of that dissertation research is to look at downstream migratory behavior of eels, which I could go on and on about, but I won't. Long and short is that in order to capture these fish to study, looking at trying to construct a weir at the place where Jim and Gloria Bennett operated a weir for many, many years, back now, oh, a decade and a half or so, and in doing so, as a matter of convenience, requested the ability to gain access through the gate at Paper Mill site, so that we could bring a vehicle down rather than carrying equipment up and back at that point. So I guess that's the Reader's Digest version. I'd be more than happy to answer any questions that might have been generated from that.
Counselor McAvoy?
Yes, thank you for being here tonight. How close was I on your name?
Well, maybe a little bit away, Zidleski.
You're the authority. I'm just curious about. I was just curious about how substantial this device is that you put across the stream. I mean, what is it? We haven't, at least I have no idea what this thing is.
Sure. What it's going to entail, I don't know if you're familiar with the site. There's a cement footing that goes across, it's about 95 feet across. And on center, they are at four-foot intervals, are two-inch holes in that cement footing. In those, a inch and a half steel pole will go in. And between those, on four-foot poles, would go some grates. It's called a resistance weir. It backs up the water a little bit and allows the fish to be funneled through an area that's opportunistically allowed to be open. At that opening is strategically located a box that is, allows the collection of those downstream migrating fish. And so the, the overall weir itself is about 30 inches tall across that area. It would hopefully not reach that. And if it does, it's going to be very high water indeed, probably be backing up things about six inches to a foot and allow a plume of water to flow nearshore into a collection box.
So was I correct in presuming that this is a state sanctioned type of thing?
Yes, I, I had some helpful conversations with Angus and the, as he may or may not have shared at this point, have Department of Inland Fish and Wildlife permit, have Department of Marine Resources permit, and this is done cooperatively with Richard Dill, who may or may not know is with DMR. Also, in a long and, I was going to say painful, but it doesn't matter, process, have ESA permitting because it is being put into a river that has endangered Atlantic salmon. It falls under U.S. Fish and Wildlife Service in terms of having Section 7 permitting as a necessity, non-targeted take for Atlantic salmon. So that basically allows you to operate in an area where you may or may not encounter that fish. Also, within the, the university, I shared ICRC, which is Institutional Animal Care and Use Committee permitting. And I think that's it at this point.
Thank you.
With an attempt at humor, I, I hope you can safely and imaginably assume the gap and, and depth of the distance between your knowledge of this and our collective knowledge. Yet we feel some responsibility to this. So there was no assumption that this was gonna be threatening in any way.
Oh, no.
The town manager did share that information with us. So the concerns that just basically had to be covered were no permanent damage to the site, no liability to the town, you know, those kinds of things. And we think through the conversation in committee, those issues were covered.
Sure, no, I, I appreciate that. And certainly making sure that things are on the up and up is important when you open the door to someone literally and figuratively.
Any other questions?
Thank you.
There's a motion on the floor. We need a second.
Second.
Further discussion? All those in favor? All those opposed?
Can you clarify the motion?
I used a little bit of, you know, shorthand, I just said, you know, approve the aforementioned proposal. I could read it again if you want.
No, really, the heart of my question is whether we're going with the language in this.
Pretty much. I, I changed a couple of things around, but it's basically the same thing.
Okay, and part of that, and I spoke with Mr. Zadluski about this, is the release of claims agreement. This is mark draft. So I wanted to get the council's input as to whether this was proper. But the idea is that both he and the graduate student Emily Thornton would sign this just on a personal level, just basically saying that if they're hurt, for instance, that they're not gonna. So I wanted just to clarify whether these documents were in proper form.
Works for me.
Do you want us to make a motion to accept those forms or as is?
Yeah, I think the, the order, it would be good to adopt the order, and it would be 2015-01. I understand there's not been a tradition of approving orders, but as you know, under the council rules and the charter, that's one of the ways that you can take action.
So do I have a motion to approve order 2015-01?
Ah, yeah. I make a motion to approve order 20, what?
2015?
2015-01. Yes.
And knowing that includes the release of claims, I'll second that motion.
Discussion? All in favor? All opposed?
And I'll send around a clean copy for your signatures.
Okay, the next item up is the Maine Municipal Association Annual Business Meeting, Voting Delegate Credentials. Basically, I guess, if there's anybody that we feel we want to put in for delegates.
Can anyone give me, give us some general background on this? I mean, I think I know the theory, but the members of the council typically go, the town staff go, why are we discussing credentials, you know?
In the past, it has been, it's, it's, this is for the annual meeting, which is held on Wednesday, October 7th this year. In the past, the town manager has been appointed as the voting delegate or a town counselor. Most recent past, it has been a town counselor who had interest in attending the convention. This year is being held on October 7th and 8th. For the last, probably eight or nine years, the convention falls on tax due date, the annual meeting falls on tax due date. So the town manager has elected not to attend so that she could be here, the former town manager. So if there has been a delegate in, in that period of time, it was a town counselor who had interest in attending.
So is, is that date, in fact, this year, the tax due date as well?
Oh, yes, of course.
So what would you like to do?
I would suggest we survey and see if there's any interest. I mean, speaking for myself, I can't attend due to other commitments.
So we're just, Council McAvoy?
Well, first of all, I don't, we ought to be a member of the Maine Municipal Association, so therefore I don't think we need to have a representative there.
So is it gonna die a natural cause?
We can hope.
If nobody wants to go? Okay, moving on to the next one. Municipal Review Committee Board of Directors' Election Candidate Nomination Form. Here again, do we want anybody to attend, or does anybody want to attend? Council Marvel.
As with another matter earlier, this is something I only speed read late this afternoon. I noted that Bangor's current city manager, Conlow, is a voting member. I did not pick up on how many open seats there are, and I don't know enough about the scope of responsibility to make any recommendation about who might want to be there. I mean, it seems to me we should be somewhat intrinsically tied to this process, given what's been moving forward to date with the vendor that MRC is selecting to do business with, right? Do I have the same organization, or am I confusing things? You're right. It's different?
What's MRC got to do with MMA?
This, this is MRC we're talking about. Yep. So, I mean, one way or another, we have been paying attention and will pay attention, whether or not that needs to take the form of being a voting delegate or a voting member. And as you can tell, again, I'm not crystal clear on what I'm discussing. But I wouldn't want to look back a month later and say, gee, we should have made a move to appoint someone to this. That's, that's the gist of my concern.
Council Shakespeare.
I have attended a number of their meetings directly, mostly through the fiber rate process with Dean Bennett. It's a very demanding position if you're going to be on the board of directors. They usually have their meetings in a variety of different towns. For instance, Bangor, Orano, had one in Hamden, and they usually last more or less all day long. And it was suggested to me that maybe I ought to belong, and I've got too much going on to, to, to be able to do that. And I think we're pretty well represented. As you said, the town manager in Bangor is on the board of directors. And some of the other directors are, have full-time positions. And they can't always attend the meetings either, but I think, you know, for, for the 180-something communities that are represented by the Maine Review Committee, I think we're well represented by the directors.
Council McAvoy.
Has the town of Hamden ever had a representative on this board? And it was Sue? Okay, thank you. Can we vote to put her back on it?
Is there anybody that has a desire to be on this board?
I'm not trying to put the town manager on the spot, but I think his opinion should be included in this discussion. So if you've had a chance to think about this at all, please share.
Thought, thought about it a bit. I'd be, and one question I have is because of the fiber rate proposal, whether there's any concern about anyone with any standing in that process. You don't want to get in a conflict situation. I know the deadline for nominees isn't till October 20th, so it's something we could table. I would be personally very leery of taking on something of that kind of time because of the, just the scope of the job that I have. But.
So do you want to table it, or do?
Could we refer it to committee, just so it doesn't go away and we can revisit this one more time?
You can.
Planning and development, maybe?
Planning and development?
Denise.
I think if you referred it to planning and development, your economic development director might be able to shed a little more light on it, too. I, I think he may have more information.
Any public comment? Okay.
Can I have one comment? I, I think, you know, I think, I think it's a great idea, Council Marvel, to refer this to planning and development. I think even, putting aside the conflict of interest, which there may be some, when someone can always remove themselves from discussion, where this is coming to Hamden, I think we should have someone represented on the board, just to keep their ear to the ground and just to probably help guide the process.
Council Marvel.
And this is where we can appeal to the public, not in the room, who's witnessing this through technology, and say, if you have a sense of professional expertise and/or interest, please get in touch with town staff, the Director of Economic and Community Development, so we could, we could consider those names as suggestions at the next committee meeting.
So do we have a motion to move this to planning and development?
I move we, I move we move this to planning and development's next meeting.
I second.
Any further discussion? All in favor? The next item up is a request for zoning map amendment. Planning Board Recommendation. Council Shakespeare.
This was a item we discussed in planning and development, and I'd like to, in the planning and development committee, and I'd like to refer this to the planning board, which is a request for the zoning map amendment of map 9A, lot 1, from residential A to business.
I second.
Well, any public comment first? Do you second that, Matt?
I second.
Discussion?
Just to refresh my memory, this is regarding that place up on Colebrook Road. Okay, thank you.
We don't need a motion to send it, do we? Okay, all in favor? All opposed? Okay, the next item up is committee reports. Counselor McAvoy, services.
Thank you, Mayor Ryder. The two significant things that occurred and the last one were, you know, dealt with tonight. The Recreation Committee presented us with a rather substantial forward-looking plan. If anybody would like to take a look at that, I'm sure, you know, they could come to the town office and a copy could be provided. And I think it's online also, if I'm not mistaken, it's on, you know, the town website. So, thank you.
Infrastructure, Council Marvel.
We did not meet in August. The next meeting of infrastructure will be a week from tonight, the 28th.
Thank you. Planning and development, Council Shakespeare.
We had a meeting on September the 16th, our last meeting. Basically, we discussed the municipal marina sign at the entrance down at the marina to McLoughlin's and Hamlin Marina, about the size of it and the cost of it. And that's an ongoing investigation, review as such, through the economic development director. We also discussed the codification portfolio of the ordinances, and Dean Bennett said we're just about finished with that. The biggest discussion was a draft of private ways ordinance. Brought up some situations and discussion on that. And that's going to be discussed again on the next meeting. And under new business, we discussed filling and grading of land and stockpiling of materials. And that also is going to be discussed as far as whether or not we need an ordinance on that. That was it.
Thank you. And on finance tonight, we did not have anything on the agenda, except for the warrants. The next item is the manager's report. Manager Jennings.
I don't have anything written, just wanted to update you on, really primarily on the finance issues. I met with the former manager, Lassard. We spent several hours going through, step by step, the financial reports that she provides to council, has provided to council monthly, and the monthly reconciliation of both interest and investment income. As you might imagine, it is a very detailed process, and rather than get started on that without her oversight and potentially do something wrong, which requires a lot of post-audit activity, we, we had scheduled this time to go through things together. It had been postponed a couple of times, but we have now done that. So I guess the, the bottom line is, starting with your October meeting, so you can look forward to getting the same kind of monthly financial reports that you've received in the past. So I apologize for the lag time on that, but it's one of the more detail-oriented, and you gotta get every, every time. So it's actually quite, I'm looking forward to digging into that, so.
Thank you. Next item is council comments. Counselor Shroyce.
No comment.
Counselor Shakespeare.
No comment.
Counselor Wild.
Comment.
Counselor Marvel.
Sorry, I've got a couple. I want to make sure the public is aware of what's being advertised as a marijuana summit. This is done under the auspices of two municipal-related public health organizations tied in with the state CDC. Anyway, Wednesday night, 6 o'clock, at the Gracie Auditorium at Hussin, the public is invited. There are going to be a number of petition items pushing for the legalization of recreational marijuana. And this is an attempt by others to share. of recreational marijuana, um, and this is an attempt by others to, um, share some science-based information and some current information about what's going on, especially with regards to the state of Colorado. Uh, secondly, I want to recognize our Emergency Services Chief, Joe Rogers. Um, I had gotten wind of some crisis intervention training for police, and remembered his talking with us, sharing, um, an event, a shooting within the last couple of years, and I was thinking about the toll that can take on the people involved, and so I emailed the chief, and he caught me in person last week, and thanked me for the message, and said he was sending to, to this next training, and that everybody on both sides, fire and law enforcement, has been trained, uh, which is very significant, because that's hard to schedule in a smaller department, and it costs money, because you're putting people into cover shifts while other people are training. So I think it's a commitment that speaks well to the community, it speaks well to his team. I want to recognize him for that.
Thank you. Council McAvoy?
Yes, uh, as usual, I wish I could take credit for this excellent weather, and I'll try to do better next year in getting it, you know, to happen during the summer time, and to remind everybody to shop local and buy American. Good night, Hamden.
Thank you. Uh, my comment is, is the update on Dorothy Dick's Park, Prentice and Carlisle has completed the cutting operation, they have moved out. I think they did an excellent job. It looks really, really good. Uh, the company is in there finishing up today on the mulching of the trails and the brush that should be completed today, the town's Highway Department is in there cleaning up, doing a little odds and ends. I'm not exactly sure what day we're gonna reopen the park, but I'm assuming by the weekend probably, it'll be available. I, uh, would like the public to go down, view the park, I, I think they'll be, uh, very happy with the accomplishment that has taken place down there, and I want to thank everybody that was involved in that for a great job, and, uh, that's my comments for tonight. Do I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor? Good night and thank you.